All right, and so I apologize in advance, it's very lengthy. I will not go too fat, please. Madam President, slow me down if I'm going too fast. Speed me up if I'm not going fast enough. It's a pretty lengthy presentation. And some pieces of this presentation have been, many of you are familiar with, right? So as you know, in my typical fashion, I typically start off most of my presentations with our goals for the district. And in these cases, I've been starting off with the goal for our reopening and what we were hoping for. But even before I dive too deeply into that, well, I'll start with that. So again, here's my picture of the desks. Now that we did some tours of the middle school, high school, and the North Beverly, some of you will recognize now, this rows and all the desks facing forward. But again, our goal has always been for the safe return of as many students as possible to an in-person setting, maximizing the learning and maximizing the students' holistic needs. Again, none of this is going to be considered until we at first look at the four strategies that we need to make sure are in place. Missing any one of these strategies makes the formula fall apart. But you have heard a lot already about masks and face coverings, physical distancing, hand washing and hand sanitizing, and staying home when sick. And those continue to be the pillars of what will hopefully make a successful return for some in-person learning for students in Beverly. We are here because we were asked and tasked with the idea of putting together three possibilities on the continuum of opening. And so my goal tonight is to share with you this preliminary draft plan that I will upload that is really just a sense of our planning and what we've been doing and where we're going. Nothing in this particular plan is binding, and the final plan will be next week. So I want, and I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to share it with people so I can hear more input. I've been working diligently to work with small groups of teachers and administrators and with school committee members. And there is a plan for us, hopefully, to do some sort of a parent forum one night next week or in the early beginning of the week. So I can, if I can figure out the live streaming, figure out a way to have some question and answer available for some of them. So before I even start on the actual planned possibilities, I just want to remind everybody that all of this, you just saw the family survey and you saw the staff survey, which are two pieces of data. But we also did a pretty extensive feasibility study. I shared the results of that feasibility study with the committee last week in my presentation. But in general, I just sort of wanted to remind you that what we learned in our study really boiled down to taking a look at the number of students and desks and chairs that can fit in a classroom safely at various distancing models. Looking at our, the kind of highlights were that in Beverly, in our classrooms, which an average size classroom of 740, that range is higher and lower depending on the building, we can fit at three-foot distancing, 22 student desks and chairs. If six-foot distancing is used, the capacity would decrease, the model down to about 12 students in an average classroom. And then, and there are smaller learning spaces that we looked at as well that may have smaller capacity. We know that in order to open in the fall in a three-foot model, we'd need additional classroom spaces at Beverly High School. And as well as repurposing spaces, and at six-foot, it would be a great number of classes that would be repurposed. That's if everyone were coming all at the same time. And then finally, we looked in one of the areas that was particularly problematic for us in Beverly is the capacity to serve lunch. I just want to remind you that we have 1,483 students scheduled to attend the Beverly Middle School. I was speaking with some other superintendents and we were talking about serving lunch. And in a hybrid model for us, that means that we would be serving lunch to 741 students. And there are districts around us who are doing a hybrid model and contemplating serving lunch to half of that. So the size, the number, the density made lunch, that was our, one of the things our feasibility found was, serving lunch is one of the greatest challenges largely because we are looking for students to six-foot distance, as well as you know, you can't have a mask on. And we all know the commitment to wearing masks is something that is what will be keeping us safe. So I also conducted a tour last, in the past couple of days. Some of you had the chance to come. We opened up some of the classrooms, and so those were all part of the feasibility study. So moving on, what we were asked to do was to plan for possibilities. In the original slide, it showed in-person, hybrid, and remote. And so, you know, that's, those are big, broad categories. So we took a first stab at what all-in would mean. And when we say all-in right now in our first, the first bullet on this slide, we mean, wear a mask, come to school, face the front of the room, and we're doing business as usual, right? So that's, you know, that was sort of the very quick and dirty, what is an all-in? We then, though, looked at what is, what are some accommodations we would need to get people in all at one time? And that's where that feasibility study led us to some of the challenges that we face. But we also wanted to consider, are there any other ways to have students attend school every day? So we looked at some modifications to schedules, how would that help us? We looked at a more traditional hybrid model of 50% students in-person, 50% remote. Dr. Flaherty described both of the options that we talked about there. That would be in a full-day model. And then we also looked at a remote learning, whether it would due to closure, whether it's the option that's selected by the committee, what, you know, what would remote learning look like? And then finally, we also had a consideration for a remote learning academy because we were pleased when the commissioner announced that if, in fact, we do open in some form of hybrid and families do not wish to send their students to school, you know, we would be able to offer our remote learning academy option, which would be different than the hybrid remote learning piece, and we would be able to offer that for our families. So this is the all-in. That was what I said, all-in, five days a week, 100% of students, three-foot distancing. Even in a three-foot distancing in our buildings, in most of our buildings, would require additional staff, additional desks. And in one building, it would require a modular classroom, just because of the, and it's actually Centerville, which in particular, they have this really interesting set of cubbies that run kind of right down the middle of the classrooms, which really restricts the amount of square footage that they have to be able to put the desks out. This would include lunch at six-foot distancing. And so if, in fact, we were to try to do that, this is what I, we were asked to create a sample schedule to go with each model. If, in fact, we were asked to do that, this is what a sample schedule might look like. In any model that we're proposing, we're talking about staggering the arrival of students first either by alphabet is one of the suggestions at the elementary level. So just actually providing families with a schedule, please arrive between this 10-minute period and asking them to spread out so we don't have everyone arriving at the same time. We would look at a morning meeting, we'd hold academics. This is not unlike a typical schedule for a typical day in our elementary schools, except for lots more hand washing and staggering arrival and dismissal. We then took that to the, to the next step. And believe me, I know that they're all on the line here watching. I have never seen a group of administrators and teachers work harder at the number of iterations that they've tried to look at, looking at always, first of all, what did the feasibility study say we could accomplish? How could we think differently about what we saw? What is important for our students in Beverly? And also, taking into account not only the survey that Dr. Flaherty just presented, but a survey that we did at the end of spring that talked about what worked well in our remote learning? What were the areas that we could improve upon? What areas did parents feel were, you know, real barriers for their child and their learning? And so all of those things were rolled into this decision to sort of say, what do we think in an optimum learning environment for elementary is important? And one of those was seeing and working, or I'm going to say connecting and working with your classroom teacher every day. And so one of the goals for us was how can we maximize that relationship of student to teacher and make sure that students are connecting with their teacher daily and that they're engaged in learning and feeling really well-supported in whether they're learning in person or remotely. And so that drove a lot of the work that we did. And then that really was the kingpin of what we wanted to continue to look at. So we, the elementary staff, spent days in, you know, working together and believe me, they worked together, they would meet as an, the leadership team would meet, and then they'd go back to their school-based buildings. And then they would share the ideas with their school-based buildings and come back together and refine and tweak what we had going. So this was a model that they have, they have chosen as their preferred model for elementary. It also is dependent on the data that we saw from Dr. Flaherty, which said that 26 or 28% of families were not going to be sending their child to school, so, because that impacts the enrollment. It's something that we need to keep in check. And it also, I will say upfront, requires probably five additional teaching staff that we would be looking to add either in a one-year or a permanent substitute position to lower the class sizes in some of the buildings, because we're committed. And I, we say the model is no closer than three-foot, but our aim is always for greater distancing. And in modeling and in moving desks around in our classrooms, we really are focusing on trying to be at that 16, 17 number in the classroom to keep maximum spacing. But at that, I will be honest at that, it's not a six-foot distancing, it's probably somewhere more in the category of four and a half to five foot. So that's, that's where we're at. However, the safety precautions do include in this model, students attending five days a week. However, we're going to request to shorten the day from eight, typically day is eight to two, we're asking to shorten it from eight to 12. Although with staggered dismissal, we realize it will be 12:30 before some of the students are on their way. Again, breaking down the dismissal, safety precautions include the cohorts of students would remain together throughout the day. So that's one of the very strong recommendations for any of us in our return, that we put cohorts of students together and they stay together all day with that adult. And there's not a co-mingling, they're not interchanging with other classrooms. That group of students is the same group of students that stay together all day. That does not mean that there may not be some special education staff that enter the room and provide services, or that students may not go to the special education teacher to get services, depending on the model. But that cohort is together and there's not, we don't say, all right, all third grade go out to recess and they all run around together. So this is really, that recess would be together, all their academics would be together. In order to accomplish the 16 or 17 or 18 in the larger room desks to be in a room together, we removed all extraneous furniture. Those of you that saw on the tour, you'll see the rooms are quite bare, they're not quite the Pinterest rooms that we're used to seeing in our elementary classrooms. The desks, as I said, would be distanced no closer than three feet, but our aim is for greater distancing. There would be designated snack areas outside where it can be or, and you know, and within the cafeteria probably, if not, and with an alternating schedule of how you would access that. But because, again, eating is the one thing that has been given us the most pause, particularly with elementary. If you ever told your child not to share their ringdings with their neighbor, and certainly they came home with a tweensie and you don't know how it got in their bag. We all know that snacks are a really important part of the day for our elementary students. So really working on how to control the snack areas. Breakfast would be served in the cafeteria. Christina Lille did a presentation this morning for our district task force and was confident that with the numbers of students who access breakfast in our elementary's buildings, that we would be able to set up and serve breakfast in the cafeteria for students at six-foot distancing in a safe manner. Bathrooms are a very important concern at the elementary, so the principals and teachers, these were really suggestions that came from those school-based teams, no more than one person in a bathroom at a time, and that we would be monitoring those bathrooms throughout the day. Grab and go lunch available for dismissal. This definitely serves as an opportunity to make sure that all of our students have breakfast and go home with a lunch, so we're not sending them home or to their care, to daycare. If, you know, I will say, I have been meeting regularly with Judith Cronin, who is our after-school provider onsite, and I know there are other after-school providers in Beverly, but we would be working closely with them. But they would take their lunch and eat it then. It includes a daily recess, but in a cohort group, so being very cognizant that we're not co-mingling at recess. We will just say hand washing, hand washing, and hand washing on a continuous basis. We know that the importance of that. And finally, and this is a subject for discussion for the school committee, the Department of Ed has a two through 12 requirement for masks and a K through one recommended. I put "or required?" question mark, because I think that's certainly something that the committee can take up and decide what the Beverly protocol will be for masks. So I'll just leave that one dangling for all of you to think about. And then finally, it does require a check on enrollment, and that means looking very closely as, sort of as Mayor Cahill suggested, how many families aren't returning? How do we match staff with the number of families that are returning? What do we need to do? You know, what, how do we need to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students? Again, pros and cons, that seems to be our thing these days. In the pros of this model, and we worked really hard because we had at least five different models that we examined in the hybrid when we were working through it, to try to make sure we were identifying the pros and cons. So all children, the pros of this model is that all children receive live instruction by their classroom teacher each day. The maintaining and strengthening peer relationships, which is super important right now for our young, our youngest learners. High-risk learners receive their supports and services every day. A consistent and cohesive implementation of academics. Consistent daily schedules provide students with well-established routines and expectations. One of the things that we acknowledge is that with our youngest learners, it's those routines, if, if, you know, not getting out of your desk when you, without permission, or washing your hands before you go somewhere, all of those routines, if we have, the more practice we have with them, the more embedded they become. Implementing robust, authentic assessments, we're very concerned about some learning loss that may have taken place over the closure that we've had. This gives us the opportunity to not only look diagnostically, but apply some authentic assessments to see how are we generalizing learning? How is it, how are we kind of ingraining things? Mitigates the difference in schedules for high-needs groups within the building. The students have access to counselors every day, and it removes the challenge of serving lunch and compliance with the six-foot distancing at lunch while masks are off. Some of the cons, I have to move my thing, are that we would need time in training to adapt the new procedures. Arrival and dismissal may create some interruption at the beginning and end of the classroom routines. Managing individual sets of student materials, needing to have devices. So one of the things about this model, in order to meet the time on learning, students would be sent home with their individual device, but they would then sign on, and I'll show you a student's schedule for either an expressive art, which based on the guidance should be delivered remotely for elementary students, or as well as perhaps there's ST Math or Lexia, something that would be more independent for them when they got home. And then finally, but, but, of course, that's a routine. You know, if you're in second grade, that iPad going back and forth to school, making sure you have a routine, charging it at home. Management of symptomatic children and staff, that's going to be a con on any one of our in-person models, hybrid art or full-in. Large numbers of students participating in the new procedures, so thinking about, that's a, that's something that the teachers are thinking, how am I going to establish those hand washing procedures within the classroom? And so in the first few weeks of school, that may diminish a little bit of our time on learning. And then some students may not consistently participate in either the specialist blocks remotely or the ST Math. However, one of the things that we do think is, if you see, you have to see your teacher every day, you're going to get reminded the next day whether you did what you were supposed to do when you were home. So that kind of goes in both directions. Trying to move, having trouble with my slideshow. Why won't it move? Let's see. No. All right. So this is what an elementary schedule in-person, we call this modified version one, because again, we talked about expressive arts being outside of the school day in this, in this model. However, you can see that we still have the staggered arrival, morning meeting, academics, snack and recess, academics, staggered dismissal, and then with lunch at home and expressive arts and asynchronous learning outside of the block, and ST Math and Lexia outside of the block. We're still sort of the, we're not really losing any of our academics by doing this, but we're eliminating that need for, for serving lunch with no masks. Same thing, this is another version of it, this is a version with the specialist arts, music. So we had this one built before we got the guidance from the Department of Ed, that, but, but one of the concerns from some of our specialists are, you know, if you know, if you're a music teacher, you see 22 classes a week if you're on, if, on March 12th, anyway. We used to see 22 classes a week. So how do we, how do we help work with that? But this is also just another version of the in-person schedule. We, this is, we did not settle on just one, and I wanted to bring this to you because I think there's some important items within this as well. This is, as we call it, our second choice. And this actually is kind of more aligned with, in sync with some of the upper grades that we're working on, K through 12. But this is a split-week model, and we, some people call it a two-three. In this model, students would attend in-person, we're still talking elementary right now, students would attend two days a week. On Wednesday, they would be remote. However, they would have a synchronous lesson from a classroom teacher within the class. Now, here's the problem, on Wednesday, we would be able to provide that, but one of the, well, I probably shouldn't get to the cons until I finish telling you all about it. But one of the challenges is in keeping that we wanted to try to have students learn from their own teacher on some of those remote days. So students are remote on the remaining two days with a combination of asynchronous and practice opportunities, and they will follow a defined schedule. We have a model where one teacher is available to support students throughout the day on their remote days. However, that is a model that is at, again, that closer to six-foot and not at six-foot, more at that four and a half to five foot. So this, I guess the question is, what's your comfort with that? I will tell you that this model can be done at six-foot distancing. However, that asynchronous support opportunity on their remote days would not come from their grade-level teachers, because their grade-level teachers would be teaching live. We would need them to be teaching live in the classroom. Again, staggered arrival and dismissal, but you'll see, we are including lunch in this model when we do have only half of our elementary students in the building at a time. We are, we believe strongly that we can safely offer lunch to them, and they would be able to, you know, participate in lunch. And again, we'd have some questions about, we'd need to work out around supervision. But again, if you, we're talking about 158 versus 320 in some buildings. So our precautions are the same, the cohorts remaining together, extraneous furniture removed, the desks, the desks in the hybrid model would be closer to six-foot in some of the classrooms. Breakfast is capable of being done, bathrooms still the same model. Lunch would be served. Lunch, I might remind you all, no matter whether you're having breakfast or lunch in any of our models, it's assigned seating only. Easy to do at the elementary, we probably kind of do it already. So much, much more difficult when I talk about high school. Again, daily recess in your cohort group, hand washing and masks would be required. So we looked at two different models of the split week. One model is the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and the other is the hopscotch model. At this point in time, as a district, we are preferring the hopscotch model largely because we would want to be in sync with our middle school and our high school, and that's a model that seems to work best. So however, you know, again, either way, it's two days in and three days out. Here's what a schedule would look like for a day, not unlike the schedule that we saw earlier. And the pros of this model, so we can increase the distancing closer to six-foot chair-to-chair in the two-day model. The students would learn flexibly from all teachers, that they would be familiar with more teachers if someone was sick, they get a full day of school, they experience their specials while in-person, but in-person doesn't necessarily mean in-person right now based on the guidance. High-need students can attend, so one of the, one of the aspects of this model is that we would be looking at some of our high-need population. You'll see it later in the presentation, requirements around addressing some of our student groups that might need more in-person time. Students would connect with their classroom teacher three times a week, and they would build technology skills because they would be spending more time remote learning on the two days that they were not in-person. There would be minimal face-to, minimal, minimal meaning less face-to-face contact with teachers there, but they would be, and they would be receiving instruction from multiple teachers rather than explicitly from their own teacher. They'd be more independent on two and a half days a week. There might be some difficulty establishing routines for the optimal academic and social learning, and specialists are visiting multiple classrooms in a day, which is a risk of cross-contamination for them and exposure for the teachers in multiple classrooms. These are some pictures of the elementary model, we went on the tours. The upper left-hand corner is a kindergarten classroom, one of the things that we're exploring for our youngest learners, and the furniture's not all there, but taking a look at non-traditional furniture there so that we're not plunking them in a desk for long periods of time. This flexibility around the consistency of seating and all of that. And then the other models are just at various spacing. So the upper right-hand corner is, is the six-foot distancing in a classroom. The, and the other two models are at the closer to six-foot, but not quite. I don't know if that's really a word I can use, but at, you know, at a probably, and we estimate it to be somewhere between four and a half to five feet, depending on the classroom. And again, we can spread out more depending on the activity. So we also took a look at the remote learning plan that we have. And in this model, this would be all remote, so that's option number three. So we had, we've looked at our all-in and in-person, we've looked at the various hybrid models. This is our elementary remote plan. This would be if we were to opt to say that we're only offering remote planning, remote learning in Beverly. This is, again, different from the remote learning academy. However, if we had this model, a remote learning academy may be part of this model as well. So in this model, all of the students would engage in 100% remote academic learning. The activities would be aligned with the Beverly District roadmap. We have a roadmap which outlines the scope and sequence of our standards to make sure that we're consistent. Each K to four student would be assigned their own iPad, which they would utilize during the school year. All five schools would follow the same district roadmap with a variety of curriculum resources at each grade level, and all students would be readily, will be, will be able to readily access login to all platforms via Clever, that's one of the technology purchases, technology arrangements that we made. One of the feed, some of the feedback that we got from families was difficulty accessing from many different areas. So Clever is sort of a, sort of warehouse, so to speak, of all of the, all of the options that families need to access. So again, different from spring learning, and our spring learning was great, and our teachers worked tirelessly, and we did a great job, but this learning and remote learning would look different than our spring learning. It would be a weekly structured schedule with a combination of daily synchronous lessons, asynchronous work, and offline work. Attendance in remote learning would be mandatory, similar to an in-person school setting. Students would be assessed and graded. Graded in elementary really means standards-based grading, taking a look and measuring how are they doing on the standards. And then expectations would be created for online engagement for students, including contribution, contributing to class, and grading and feedback expectations would be related to their engagement in their lessons. Our remote learning plan, a typical day, would be, follow a typical school day. It would include direct instruction in the major disciplines, math, science, ELA, and social studies, as well as opportunities for specialists, opportunities for students to connect through small group sessions and individual conferencing. Daily remote learning would include some synchronous lessons, and students would access those to a live teacher via Google Classroom, Google Meet, or Zoom. Students may be assigned intermittent work, sorry, I have to move this thing again. Intermittent work during this time to complete assignments, but the teacher would be supervising student learning during this time. And asynchronous lessons would also supplement some of the work, and they would be learning that is guided more independently or with the aid of a parent or caregiver. That would include time for completing assignments, projects, or receiving additional services. And so finally, one of the areas, obviously, if we were in a remote learning aspect, we'd need to be providing some technology support to families. We did purchase a significant amount of technology and curriculum tools to support the staff and students during the upcoming year. Some of the tools would include iPads to ensure student learning, wireless hotspots, curriculum materials to support content area, assessment tools, and online tools for, that support the work and systems. And then finally, protocols are created for reporting and resolving technology failures. So, you know, that, again, I just want to say, that was based on some of the feedback that we got, one of the areas. And would we, should we open in a hybrid and then need to pivot to remote learning? This would be the remote learning connected to those students that are in the hybrid model. The sample elementary schedule in a remote learning, this is really just a suggestion, we would be working individually with families to help. But we, we did also hear from families that they wanted a lot more structure and ideas around what that day looks like for students. So that is our remote. And I'm, do you want me to stop and field questions on the elementary or just keep plowing through, Ms. Abel?
Another question.
Karen, go ahead, Karen.
Dr. Trocek, we've been talking about this a lot, remote learning. But I think it might be helpful to just clarify the difference for anybody watching. The difference between remote learning and Remote Learning Academy.
Awesome, thank you. That's a great question. So the, that's actually at the very end of the presentation, but I'm glad you asked it. No, no, I'm glad you asked it now. I probably could have slid it in under each of the levels. The Remote Learning Academy is for those families that, so when we're, when we're looking at the subs groups of students and the cohorts that we're creating, if we're to open in hybrid and then pivot to remote, that's the, the sort of default remote learning plan that we would go to. For those families that are choosing a remote learning academy, we, and, and I don't have full details. And I know I've received a couple of emails asking me, we're, we're still waiting for the Department of Ed. They are issuing guidance. They're actually preparing a platform that we would all be able to access through the department to provide that. So it would be a little bit more like a, a virtual learning academy. It would be a little bit more like that. So more specific with that, we would assign a Beverly educator to support the child and the family. We would supplement it certainly. Again, you know, we always try to make everything as strong as we can in terms of aligning with the Beverly curriculum roadmap. But it would be, it would probably look a little bit more like a separate learning academy platform for families to use at this point. And we're waiting to see what the Commonwealth sends out so that we can vet it and decide whether or not it's what we want to do or if we want to create our own. But right now, there's, the commissioner has said that he is going to be, they've been, they have been working with, through an RFP, trying to put together a program that all districts could access so that it would be available for all of the districts across the Commonwealth. So we're waiting a little bit on that.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't see any hands. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I can go a little quicker now because you kind of have the cadence of what we're doing. We're looking at all-in, we're looking at in-person, we're looking at hybrid, we're looking at remote learning, and we're looking at the Remote Learning Academy. So again, our in-person, all students in-person, even if we look at it, no matter how we look at it, it's a challenge for the middle school to get, we really can't, can't fit our feasibility study would tell us. And it isn't fitting in the classrooms, they fit in the classrooms actually quite well. It's 1,483 students embarking on one building, the travel in the halls, the time, feeding and, and doing lunch. So currently, when we are, before the closure, we would serve 360 to 390 students in one lunch in each of the cafeterias. And trying to break that down and find a way to distribute and serve all of those students is a real challenge, as well as spreading them out and monitoring and supervising them as they eat lunch and wear masks, as well as, you know, at the need to provide our teachers with a, a lunch opportunity as well. So the lunch piece is really a challenge for us. I want to, I, I kind of went ahead of myself. I forgot I had my own slides here. The each, this is the current enrollment at Beverly Middle School, and that is what makes us unique, I believe, in Massachusetts right now. It could be the highest enrollment in a, a middle school around. At one point in time, I think we were real close to it. As you can see, we have 360, 363, 363, but we have 395 in seventh grade. That presents a unique challenge for our seventh graders. So we took a look, first of all, could we bring all 1,483 students based on three foot distancing? And as I said, the classroom space is available, but not space to provide safe arrival and dismissal and not really a safe, to safely serve lunch. So it would require a significant increase in staffing, possibly the use of off-site spaces, a challenge with supervision. And so while we did our due diligence of our feasibility study, we, we didn't spend that much more time on this model because we sort of wanted to figure out a better way to bring our kids back to school. So we did spend a lot of time on the split week hybrid model, which right now is the preferred model for us here. We, we took a look, there really aren't a lot of ways to slice the pie when you talk about this many students. And so we examined again, the Monday, Tuesday versus, versus the hopscotch model. But again, trying to stick to our goal of having students connect with their classroom teacher daily. We thought, well, if we figured out a way to do it with elementary, how can we make that similar in the middle school? Knowing that we're looking at a modified schedule of dismissal at one o'clock for our middle school. We, you know, we began there and then we sort of worked our way backwards. So the plan that we have right now is that students would be split into two cohorts. Cohort one, attending in-person on Mondays and Thursdays. Cohort two, attending on Tuesdays and Fridays from eight forty-five to one. Our in-person classes that are offered twice a week would be ELA, social studies, math, science and one global application. For those of you who have middle school students, you know, so that's actually, we, we went to six periods instead of seven. Cohort would attend two remote synchronous classes. So, so cohort one, remember they're live on Monday and Thursday. They would be getting a remote synchronous class on Tuesdays and Fridays. And cohort two would be getting them on Mondays and Thursdays. So we looked at how to keep them connected to their teachers. We would be offering a synchronous class in the humanities and in math and science. And they would be, that they would be shorter versions, probably 45 minutes, but it would be a check-in with those two, two major content teachers each day of the remote. And they would be also expected to complete some independent assignments on the remote learning days. And so additionally, they would be working remotely and independently on Wednesdays. However, each Wednesday would start with a synchronous team meeting, much like I think we had a lot of synchronous team meetings in the, in the spring for some of our fifth and sixth grade teams. The work would be assigned by the core content teachers for Wednesday. And then they would also be accessing the Global Apps Choice Board on Wednesday. This is an example of what the hybrid bell schedule would look like for in-person learning for grades five and six. So arrival between eight fifteen and eight forty-five. They would stay in block A from eight forty-five to 1020, they would stay, they would have a global app from 1030 to 1115. And they would have their other team teacher in the afternoon from 11, 1120 to one. I would tell you that the model right now is and would remain that the grade level teachers are responsible at the middle school for identifying times for recess. And that would remain, and they do that already. They schedule so they're not all out at the recess at the same time. So that model would remain in place, but it would include their day, in-person would include a snack and recess break, much like it would at the elementary. We would provide grab and go lunch for students who purchase or receive lunch. And then, so this is, you know, this is aspirational, and I really want to say it's aspirational. It's very, they're, they're, they want to do as much as they can at the middle school. So one of their thoughts is that, well, if, if they're going to be going home and working either synchronously or asynchronously in a global app, maybe they could, if they're participating in band, in chorus and strings, maybe they could stay and go outside. And we, because, because those activities would be allowed with great distancing outside. The question became, also was asked around any of the other kinds of activities. And honestly, I just don't think we've gotten that far. I don't know what else is available or possible, but understanding that, that that would happen. Teachers would have their lunch from one to 1:30 and they would be available in the afternoon to provide. One of those teachers would be providing synchronous support to the team. And the others might be able to provide a small group or, you know, individual conferencing to families. And so it's just sort of a, this is, these are like an idea. We, we keep going deeply to try to see what we can do to enhance the experience for kids. This is what a typical schedule would look like for a fifth grader in cohort one. They would attend live on Mondays and Thursdays. They would be remote on Tuesdays and Fridays. And then Wednesday, everybody would be remote and that would be sort of what their schedule would look like in that remote opportunity. So one of the things I will say in the middle school, in grades, in all grades, I, Lisa Oliver and I spent some time this afternoon again in our classrooms and, and revisiting our model. Each one of the students could attend and then we would be able to adhere to six foot distancing where we think that would be really helpful and important at the middle school level for students in that age group. And so that's one of the things that we do believe in this hybrid model, that we would be able to adhere to that six foot distancing for all students in all of their classes. Has something a little bit to do with the brand new, beautiful middle school that we have and the facility that we built, and we built it for flexible learning spaces. So that makes that an option for us. This is the, this is the opportunities for grades seven and eight. Hybrid plan for seven and eight, the students would be split into two cohorts. Cohort one, attending on Mondays and Thursdays. Cohort two, on Tuesdays and Fridays, same arrival and dismissal. And for the seventh and eighth graders, you'll remember at fifth and sixth graders are on two-person teams. Our seventh and eighth graders are on five-person teams. So they would be in-person for the ELA, social studies and/or civics in grade eight. Math, science, foreign language and one global application. Again, remotely on the opposite days. They, and this gets a little complicated, but it's really the idea that in order to determine who's getting what support from what core content on the remote day, they would be further split into A, one A and one B and two A and two B. So that if you were in one A and two A, you'd be getting that synchronous support on your first learning day from your ELA and social studies team. And then on, on the second remote day, you'd be getting that synchronous support from math and science. And foreign language would be incorporated into the Wednesday day and/or that afternoon period. Again, same thing for the B would be the opposite. And then also, students would be expected to complete independent assignments on their remote learning days. And all students would work independently on Wednesdays following a synchronous team meeting. And again, that would be where foreign language synchronous learning would be included and perhaps global, global apps, applications, choice board. Here is what a sample schedule for a seventh grader would look like, or this is, I think, a seventh grader and an eighth grader, looking at that six-block schedule. And again, same idea around the grab and go. This is an individual, oh, that was the bell, sorry, that was the bell schedule. This is the individual schedule for an eighth grader. You can see they would go through their in-person class on Monday. They would take their lunch, they'd go home and they'd be small group or independent work. On Tuesday, that would be their remote day. They would get remote math and science. On Thursday would be their in-person day. And on Friday, they'd get remote English and civics. So again, our goal of connecting students with their classroom teachers. This is, so these are two classroom pictures. This is at six foot distancing. This was an example of what we tried to do, if we could put more in a classroom. But we can, in, for each individual classroom, we can do the, because our numbers are such, the way that we're divided, we can, in our grades five and six with a two-person team, there's typically 48 students on a team, break it down to 24 and then 12 in each classroom. In the fifth, in the seventh and eighth grade, we have five-person teams, so we would divide that number by five. Middle school remote, very similar to what we talked about in elementary. Again, very similar to what we talked about in elementary, assessed and graded, expectations, synchronous lessons. I won't go through the exact same thing because it's all the same information. Our remote learning model, we would just pivot to a remote learning model. I do have a sample schedule for what might look like a fifth grade remote schedule. Not much different than the one that we looked at for the hybrid. And then this is what a seventh or eighth grade may look like. Sorry, there's a typo down here at the bottom. That should say seven, so I'll work on that later. So that's the middle school. And I don't know if, if you want me to stop there for any middle school questions?
I see Ms. Visnick has her hand raised.
Dr. Trochek, I wonder if you could be very explicit about the cohorts and the movement in the middle school of the students versus the teachers?
Perfect, yes, thank you for reminding me. In, in all classes, the students would stay in their class all day. The teachers would rotate. So we would not, they, once they're in a space, they would be in that space and the teachers would rotate. Same, in all grade levels, five through eight. So, and, and at this point in time, I will say, we're still thinking and working about that global application. Because if it's perhaps phys ed and they're going to go outside and do something or, or something like that, then students would travel. But when they traveled, we'd travel, and we've talked about a staggered schedule of travel so that they're not all in the hall at the same time. And they would travel with their teacher and cohort to wherever they were going. But they were not planning on having students change classes. They're going to stay in their class. What exception? Seventh and eighth grade, if you're in advanced coursework for math. We, or in, in perhaps in foreign language, if German, you know, if we, we may have to take you and move you to a different spot. And they're still working on the explicit of that, but we certainly don't want to deny anyone that's on a track for Algebra I in eighth grade. They would need to be able to have that opportunity. So we would be doing something a little different for them, more, more like probably what we're doing at the high school.
Okay, I don't think I see any other hands.
All right, so finally, we were doing the same thing all over again with the high school possibilities, all-in, modified day, hybrid, remote learning, Remote Learning Academy. So again, you know, and, and I will tell you that in particular, I, I think it is a concern that we all have around the lunches, looking at how to provide lunch at the middle school, at the high school safely. One of the requirements of serving lunch is assigned seating. I would, I would venture to say that even the high school teachers that might be online with us tonight would tell you that that's a big challenge to try to figure out how you're going to assign seating when students go to the cafeteria from a multitude of different classrooms and how, how we would track and how we would know and what we would do. So we believe, much like the other, is if, if we can find some robust remote learning to end the day at home, that it would benefit us. We also, again, have a, a primary goal of having students connect with their core teachers when they're remote and how that would look and what we could do and how we could support that. So first of all, the all-in can't happen. Three foot distancing can't happen. We have a challenge at the high school. The building is beautiful, but it, it actually is much smaller in capacity of seating and what we can do with desks and how we can spread students out. On top of which, many of you noted already that our students are a bit larger when they get to high school. So that's just another concern that we have. And so we looked at a number of different models in, in the high school. We looked at all of the students in. We looked at students week in, week out. We looked at twelve-foot, six-foot distancing, which is 12 desks in each classroom. And the only way we can comply with a six-foot distancing model at the high school in all of our classrooms would require additional space, additional staff and/or students coming only once every three weeks. So that means they would attend school one week and then not attend school for two more weeks or some version of that, right? So that, that was sort of a, a challenge for us as we thought about that. We didn't think that was enough time in school. We settled eventually on a hybrid, well, let me go through all of them. This was the three-foot distancing. This was the challenge of full in. We sort of again, did the exercise that we needed to do around how could we do it? And moved on to try to figure out a more palatable kind of model that we could come up with. So the one that I think we, this is a two-week split that we, remember I told you we examined a number. This would be week on, week off, Panther Week, Panther Week, then Pride Week, Pride Week. Those of you I'm sure are all familiar with the Panther Pride schedule. At Beverly, it's a block scheduling. A through D, I think is Panther Day. E through H is Pride Day. And that's the, the schedule they're accustomed to right now. So trying to figure out how to make that work for students. We have a very robust program of studies that we've developed. We're very proud of that in Beverly. I think that's one of the things we hear from our families most often. And we tried to find a model that would not disrupt that robust program so that if you had opted, you know, it's been hard enough to not have been in school, but to not be able to take that art class that you were waiting to take or something like that, that you've been waiting for your opportunity to be in. We wanted to try to preserve as much of that for the kids as we could. So we, the week on, that was the week on, week off. This is the three-week split. This is at six foot distancing. We can achieve six foot distancing, but this would require us to break into three cohorts and have students attend once every three weeks. Well, one week every three weeks. We looked at a two-day split. And we looked, this is one that has the month, this is, I think, the one that we landed on, Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, with Wednesday remote. Again, it's four and a half feet spacing in this model. As opposed to six, those of you who went on the tour were able to see what that looked like and felt like. It's also considering, and even in any hybrid model at the two-week, we would need to be utilizing repurposing spaces throughout the building. So in order to have as many, in the larger classes that we offer, whether it's chorus, whether it's, I, I don't even know all the names of all of them, but there are some courses that are enrolled at 50 and 60 students. So even in a hybrid, we would need a space. and 60 students. So, even in a hybrid, we would need a space larger than the classroom space, so we would be commandeering some of these other spaces. The corner rooms are larger than the hallway rooms, so as part of our feasibility study, we were looking for spaces that could take more than 17 students in the hybrid model. This is what a schedule would look like in that model. And again, I don't, I don't have the time specifically in here, but I may have the next slide, I'm not sure. This is, the, the idea is that in a week period, students would attend on Monday as a Panther Day. They, that Cohort A would be live in person on a Panther Day for their A to D classes. They would be, they would be dismissed. Teachers would have lunch, and then teachers would meet with the remote cohorts. Now remember, teachers don't have four solid classes. Sometimes, some days they have three, some days they have two, because the total of classes that they teach are five. So teachers would be live three of these periods, or two of these periods, and then we would want, we would want them to work a schedule where they're at minimum connecting with two of their three, if it's a three, or both of their classes in the afternoon synchronously for a period of time, to make sure that what they had been doing while they're home was getting accomplished, answering any questions that they had, setting them up for whatever they needed to know when they came in live the next day, or so forth. So, that would allow them that connection while they're remote with their classroom teacher. Again, Tuesday would be, the Cohort B would be live with Cohort A remote. Wednesday is an alternating schedule of synchronous meetings and times to meet with your teacher throughout the day. Thursday would switch to Pride Day. They would be live in their E through, E through H classes, and then connecting with those Cohort B who has been remote that day. And then on Friday, it's the vice versa, live with Cohort B, connecting synchronously with Cohort A. We really tried to think about some of the challenges that we faced in the spring for some of the kids. We worry that three days, four days, five days, six days, it are actually six days on a Panther-Pride schedule, that if we were on that Monday-Tuesday, there was still a long period of time. If we're on a week-on, week-off, it's a long period of time. So, just trying to keep that connection. And then, again, our remote, our high school remote is gonna look very similar to what you saw in the middle and high school. This would be if all of us were remote, or if we went into an emergency closure. Daily structured schedules, combination of synchronous, asynchronous, and offline work. Attendance in remote learning is mandatory, similar to an in-person setting. Assessed and graded, students will be assessed and graded. We got a lot of feedback from families that this is a really important feature that cannot be forgotten in our remote model, no matter what we do. And expectations for online engagement for students, including expectations surrounding the use of cameras and microphones, contributing to class discussions, and then grading and feedback, which is another area of feedback that we got from families about our, our learning model from the spring. It was great that we had that opportunity to learn from the things that went well, and to understand what the barriers for some of our families were. A typical day, this doesn't change from what we saw in the middle school model, same thing. And then this may be what a remote schedule looks like for a high school student. This would be a Panther Day, and they would be expected to attend all four of their classes on a Panther Day. And then likewise, they'd be a Pride Day, you know, and they, I don't know, I guess I don't have an answer whether it would remain Panther, Panther, Pride, Pride, or if you'd revert to the Panther, Pride, Panther, Pride. I get confused, but I know you guys all have that under control up there at the high school. Again, the technology support. So remember, at the high school, we have our LEAS program. We are working really hard to make sure that internet access, reliable internet access is available for everyone. That's a change that says iPads, but it's actually laptops at the high school. And, and so, again, that's the work that we'll be looking at. So, before I go on, any questions about the high school model?
I see Ms. Visnick has a hand raised.
It's maybe not just the high school question, but because we're at the end of our different models, can you speak to, two, two things about quote-unquote "remote" learning and the distinction somewhat piling on Ms. Robinson's question about the Learning Academy? The two things are basically, the, what do we expect for a community? Like, if you're in the remote learning, are you considered part of our school community? How will we try to continue to integrate those students with the larger? And then part B is, and I asked this before, but I think it's worth you restating the answer. What happens if I start in the remote, and then like a vaccine comes, and I want to join my classmates in person?
Excellent. Both great questions. Thank you. So, for the Remote Learning Academy, you are absolutely enrolled in the Beverly Public School. You're part of the Beverly Public Schools community. Any extracurricular activities or any of those things are all available. I'm sure they'll go to them if they're not going to the, if they're still quarantining or trying to remain, you know, away from crowds. However, it will also be, and again, I'm waiting for the specifics of what that model will be and what it will look like, but we spent a lot of time, and the administration at the high school was very intent on making sure that students, again, that robust program of studies that we have. So, we may be looking at a platform and making sure that if you were wanting AP Physics, and you're gonna be remote, that we have a way to deliver AP Physics to you, and what will that look like? We, I will say that we would, that every individual course will not necessarily be taught directly by a Beverly educator, but you will have a primary Beverly educator. Some of them will be wholly virtual, is what I mean. So, you may, we may be part of a virtual community where some of the classes are online, much like a college course would be, right? Your professor would be online, and you would have a relationship online with that professor, right? But we will have Beverly educators associated at the high school level with the courses, overseeing some of the coursework. And again, you know, in terms of whether or not the reentry, we certainly, I think we'll be reassessing at various points, and so I think we need to establish what's that point, where there would be a reassessment, where we would be looking to change. I've seen some communities, I think I would be looking to the committee to have a further discussion about this, but some communities have stated that, you know, it's January 4th, so if you, if you opt into the Learning Academy, or whatever the last day of the second quarter is, right? So, if you opt in, here are the, here are the, you know, the times, the dates and times that you can, we can revisit that. But you'd be in the midst of a course, so it would be really hard to shift from one environment and course to another. So, we would be looking to try to manage or control at least the flow in that manner. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, I guess if, maybe we haven't talked really about the cohorts and what happens in certain scenarios, but if you're, if you're in school, you chose in school, and you get sent home for some reason, then you're remote learning, you're not going into the academy, correct?
I would, yes, I would believe that.
And so then, when you, that person would be able to rejoin more quickly.
Yes, because they would have stayed, so if they're home because they're ill, then, you know, we would be providing them, just as if you were home from in-person sick, you know, we'd make sure you had your work, and as soon as you're ready and well, and, you know, can return, you would return to the same model and the same spot. The challenge with it is, some of the models that we're putting together are predicated on the number of students that we have, right? So, we can, we can, we can say we're six-foot distancing, and we can fit you because certain number of students are in a remote learning environment, and once that happens, you know, there'd be, we have to reassess. So, I'm not saying that we wouldn't reassess. I'd say that we'd need just specific times, points in time when we would say, because if in fact we had enough people coming back, what does that do, and we can make adjustments at that, you know, natural break time, or wherever we've determined that time is. I, I, I will tell you, we're still working on the Remote Learning Academy. It's, it's complicated. I will, some ideas that we're thinking about is maybe even partnering with local districts who also have, you know, particularly for some of our, you know, less-enrolled classes. So if we have a small number of kids that are looking for a particular class, you know, and, you know, North Andover has some kids that are looking for that same class, and Danvers has a couple of kids that are looking, could we partner together and regionalize to have a virtual class that works, that provides, you know, that content? It's just trickier at the high school level.
Looking to see if there's any other hands. Any other committee members have a question? I don't see any other hands, Dr. Chik. Go ahead.
Okay. So the Remote Learning Academy, as I said, you know, it's really there for families that are unable or unwilling to attend any form of in-person. Again, we are waiting for more guidance on what that will look like, and, you know, we will be sharing more as we go along. So, the plan for high-need students, so one part of the plan that I have to submit is, what is our plan for our high-need students? So if we are in remote, how are we taking into account or accommodating for those students who, we know struggle for remote learning, who have disabilities, who are in certain categories. So, the department has issued some specific guidance around how we would prioritize student groups in order to make sure that we're meeting all of the, all of the needs. So, all students with significant and complex needs as a result of a disability, including our preschool-age students, will be prioritized for receiving in-person instruction. They, these students will receive as much in-person instruction as feasible within the health and safety parameters. We'll, we'll plan to provide this group of students with in-person instruction. Now, these are particular. So for example, our AIM program, or our ATTAIN program, we're really looking for them, even in the middle school, if it's in a hybrid, that ATTAIN program would be five days a week, every week. And other students with disabilities will participate in the same learning model and schedule as their peers, but they will receive their identified services synchronously and asynchronously, and there may be opportunities to expand to a wider range of students with disabilities. I just want to be clear that the plan for high-need students, the, the guidance, because I think there's gonna be questions about that, but these are the guidance around who would remain in-person as much as possible. Preschool-age children with disabilities, students with significant and complex needs, students already identified as high-needs through the IEP process on IEP form entitled Primary Disability Level of Need, and they need to meet at least two of the criteria. So they need to have services that are provided outside the classroom. The providers have to be special education teachers and related service providers, and they have to constitute more than 75% of the student's school day. And if they can't, or students who can't engage in remote learning due to their disability-related needs, students who primarily use aided and augmentative communication, or are homeless, in foster care, or duly identified as ELL, which means that they are identified as English learners, and they are identified as students with a disability. So that, this is just my checklist, as we keep going and getting through things and finding out more information. So, I am gonna stop sharing there and come back to all of you, and see if there's any more questions.